You can see it's an autumn picture.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah. It's a nice view.
Yeah, it's basically a this, I think it's sunrise, but it might be a sunset. It's hard to tell. So good to see you all.
Thanks.
Yeah, good to see you. That is pretty. Your backdrop. Let's see Ted, this John, Ted, we can see you. Can you give us a quick sound check?
Yes, I can see you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Ted.
Okay.
Good evening. Corey Martin from the Reagan Institute.
Thank you, Corey.
Good evening. This is Michael Henchcliffe from Payette.
Thank you. Scott, can you give us a quick sound check and video check?
Hi, Scott from Viness.
Thank you. Jim, we can see you. Can you give us a quick sound check? I think your microphone is still muted.
It's still muted.
Okay.
Good to see everyone and it's good to be here.
Thank you.
Swathy, I'm just joining on a second account with a model camera that we could perhaps rename. In case we need, in case we need to view the model that we have here.
Okay. Hi, Tom. We can see you. Can you give us a quick sound check?
I can see you and can hear you.
Thank you.
I'll just, this is Jeff. I'll just give the obligatory reminder that we're going to start promptly at 6:30 in order to get things going on time. So if we have some more people straggle in, they'll, they'll want to stay quiet. I sent a reminder to planning board members and we are going to just, I just sorry, just a reminder to always say your name when you're speaking and, you know, make sure that the audio picks you up. And we'll certainly let you know if we can't hear you.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you very much. All right, then our first item on the agenda is an update from the community development department. Please also introduce staff present at the meeting.
Thank you, Catherine. Again, Jeff Roberts, Director of Zoning and Development in the Community Development Department. And on the staff with us, we have Swathy Joseph, who is on the zoning development team, and Daniel Messplay, who's also in the zoning development team. We have from urban design in CDD Eric Thoroldson and Susannah Biglin. And I believe that is the staff that we have present tonight. So for the update today, and yeah, I'm, unfortunately could not attend tonight. I think she was participating in a very late night city council session last night. So I'm covering and the, I guess the first update, which is maybe one of the, one of the more salient ones, going, going back to the top of the meeting. Catherine, you mentioned the state of emergency that, that has been declared and that we've been sort of living under for the past year and such. So it was announced that, you know, since the last meeting of the planning board meeting, which was a couple of weeks ago, that the state of emergency will be lifted started on, starting on June 15th. And we do have a planning board meeting scheduled on June 15th. So that has left us in a position where we are figuring out what happens next. And here's what we know so far. There is a bill before the legislature currently that would extend the ability to hold remote meetings throughout the summer. However, that has not been acted upon at this point. And so given that that's the case, we have to currently plan to hold next week's and subsequent planning board meetings live and in person for the requirements of the open meeting law. So what does that mean? So we will likely, if, as we resume to in-person meetings, at least initially be in the Sullivan Chamber. We, we did a quick check to see what rooms were best equipped to begin handling public meetings. And I believe that is where we are likely to be as we've, we've been virtually over the past many months. There may still be opportunities to provide opportunities for remote public comment. That is something that we're still working to look into. There was some discussion at the city council about that last night. And of course, if the legislature acts very soon, then it's possible that the meeting might continue to be held remotely as it was originally planned to be held. And so the, the bottom line for all of this is that we will be providing details on our website as more of those details come together. When we post the agenda, that's generally the best place to find information about upcoming meetings because we can, we, we will post that in advance and we will be able to update that and push out information to all of our subscribers and to planning board members. And we'll be doing our best to get the details out to all members of the public as we have a little bit more clarity on what we'll be doing. But again, just the status of things right now, given the lifting of the state of emergency is that we're planning to have next week's meeting in person. So looking at the calendar then, tonight's meeting, we have a little bit of everything. We've got a continued special permit case, which we'll be getting right into. Just as a, a public service announcement, we did post this on the agenda. We originally had a, a public hearing scheduled, a zoning petition, which is about account, a mission, accounting for admissions as an amendment to Article 22 of the zoning ordinance. That will not be discussed tonight. That was a petition that because of a scheduling issue needed to be refiled. So it will be, have a rescheduled hearing and that we, and we currently have that on the calendar for June 29th. So if anyone is tuned in, expect me to talk about that. It won't be tonight. It'll be June 29th. And then we have some extensions, some BZA cases, like I said, a little bit of everything. Next week, June 15th, we also have a continued public hearing. This is on 727 Mass Ave. This is one that the planning board has heard a few times, starting from even, even before the pandemic. And at the last meeting, the planning board asked them to continue working until, and, and would hear it again on June 15th to try to resolve some of the outstanding questions and issues that the planning board raised. So that will be back and we'll have a new public hearing on a new special permit application. This is for a cannabis retail store at 95 First Street. Then moving to June 22nd, we have a public hearing scheduled. This is another continued public hearing. It's on 269 to 301 Basser Street, which is the MIT Graduate Student Dorm. The board heard this a little bit earlier and again, had some comments that the applicant has worked to address and submitted some additional materials. And on June 29th, I just mentioned that we have a public hearing scheduled on those Article 22 emissions, accounting, proposed zoning amendments, and that is a city council zoning petition. So that is a, a spate of meetings coming up and we don't anticipate having a meeting July 6th. But we'll be picking up again in, in July and we expect to have a number of exciting cases for the board. The last update I'll make, there's, there has been a lot going on at city council, but I'll just mention one thing because because I'd like to, the city council adopted the two zoning petitions, which the board heard earlier this year, revising the retail zoning requirements and the, the zoning provisions for home occupations. So that has been a, really a long kind of labor of love for those of us in, in CDD and myself in particular, along with our economic development division, party Safari has worked on it quite a bit and we're very proud to see that adopted. We're excited to start getting information out to the business community and just helping people understand what these new rules mean and what people are going to be allowed to do, what people, kind of businesses people are going to be allowed to, to start and, and what the process is going to be like from here. So with that, I will conclude my update, turn it back over to the chair.
Thanks, Jeff. All right. The next item is the approval of meeting minutes. The board has received certified transcript for the meeting held on April 27th, 2021. If there are any questions from board members, please say your name. Then is there a motion to accept the transcript as the meeting minutes?
Steve, so moved.
Louis, second.
Roll call vote.
On that motion, Lubachi?
Yes.
Yes, Ted Cohen?
Yes.
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Flynn?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Thompson Avich?
Yes.
Catherine Preston Connolly?
Yes.
It's all members voting in favor.
Great, thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a continued public hearing on case PB 375, a special permit application by the Reagan Institute to construct a 185,810 square foot building for technical office and laboratory for research and development use at 600 to 624 Main Street. And we'll start as usual with having CDD staff summarize why this is before us.
Thank you Chair Connolly, Daniel Messplay, Senior Zoning Manager for Community Development here. So this case was first heard by the planning board in late March and was continued at that time. And the application is seeking a project review, special permit for development of at least 50,000 gross square feet, as well as special permit relief to reduce parking requirements to exceed the maximum allowable curb cut width and to exempt basement space from the gross floor area calculations. The relevant approval criteria and comments on the proposed changes are provided in a memo from CDD. The board made comments at the last hearing and the applicant has submitted new materials in response to those comments, which are also covered in the CDD memo. At the last hearing, we had separate memos from the traffic, parking and transportation department and the Department of Public Works. But we don't have separate memos from those departments for this hearing.
Okay. Thank you. So the presenter on behalf of the applicant will be James Rafferty. You will have up to 30 minutes for your presentation, though of course, the board can allow additional time as necessary. Please introduce the project team and begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Can I be heard? Great, thank you. For the record, my name is James Rafferty. I'm an attorney with offices located at 907 Massachusetts Avenue in Cambridge. I'm appearing this evening on behalf of the Reagan Institute, the applicant in this special permit case. On behalf of Reagan is a number of senior management people, the Director of the Reagan Institute, Dr. Bruce Walker is present this evening, as is Corey Martin, and Ms. Martin is the Director of Operations. Also with us from the project team is Jim Conningeiser. Mr. Conningeiser is a lead engineer and the person that is facilitating all of the permitting and construction activity for this program. This is a project been designed by the Payette Associates and this evening we'll be hearing from them as well. We have a slide, I think, that we would probably like to begin with and maybe Swathy could put that up for us.
So Jim, are you seeing the, the summary of development response to slide now?
I am, very small. I'm seeing more of you candidly, Madam Chair, than I am of the slide. I, I don't know if that, and it's, it's a lovely view, don't get me wrong, but I don't know if that's intentional or?
It's probably a, a choice you make as to the, the style of view you get, whether you have a standard view, side by side, gallery, that kind of thing, so.
Okay, well, I, I, I know this document pretty well and if you don't mind me maintaining this. Okay, enough, enough of that. So as noted by Mr. Messplay, this project and application was before the, the planning board on March 23rd. And frankly speaking, it was a rather well-received design. Board members commented quite favorably upon the unique nature of this design, its special geometry. And in many ways, it was reflection of the unique nature of the work and the mission of the Reagan Institute. And the board was kind enough to allow us to go into some background and explanation on that because unlike many other applicants that appear before the board, the Reagan Institute is not a commercial pharmaceutical company, but it is a philanthropy-based nonprofit that is devoted to academic and scientific research around the HIV vaccines, COVID vaccines and other measures intended to combat disease and immunology. So tonight, we have before us the, if we could go to the next slide, well, we've broken the presentation into two portions because in addition to the, the fine job we did in the architectural presentation, there was disappointment expressed by the board with the response to our community outreach. I, candidly, it wasn't for lack of effort, but for a variety of reasons, the communication was not effective and our community meetings, which we held, were lightly attended. Lightly would be an understatement. So we redoubled our efforts in that area and I want to acknowledge and express appreciation to a couple of individuals, particularly the leadership of the, of ACT, the Association of Cambridge. Farrell Patterson Monroe and Kathleen Williams, both of whom are residents at Newtown Court in Washington Elms. They really have been a great resource and have allowed us an opportunity to really engage a number of levels. We have held two community meetings since we were last here. Both meetings were fairly well-attended, but most importantly, it also allowed us an opportunity to create some dialogue for Reagan Institute people to engage on, with Ms. Monroe and other community agencies, and you'll see them depicted on the image. So there's an established network of agencies that serves the Port neighborhood and the greater area. And Reagan, you may recall, had established relationships with some of the more citywide organizations, most notably the Cambridge Public Library and CRLS, where they were hosting educational seminars. But we've been able to engage now with Tutoring Plus, with Margaret Fuller House, with the Community Arts Center and a variety of other agencies that really have an established track record at delivering services. And for Reagan, this has been a critical part of their mission. A big portion of what they do isn't simply the research they do, but the public health component of their mission as well as public education. And never is that objective more critical now than when the importance of stressing the value of vaccination is so critical, given the issues that are being faced. So we welcome this chance and we want to express our appreciation to both Cheryl and Kathy for their assistance. Similarly, the Cambridge Housing Authority was very helpful to us, particularly Kevin Braga. They took responsibility and were, and hand-delivered flyers to residents in both communities, Newtown Court and Washington Elms for both of our community meetings, going door to door and putting those flyers on the doors. And that was a level of outreach that we frankly, given the restrictions of COVID and other limitations, we simply didn't have access to in the past. So tonight's presentation and the submitted materials in our submission are details, the issues that came up during that. I note that the chair said at the last meeting that it was important that community members feel heard and that maybe not everything is agreed upon, but there were meaningful conversations. I'm going to leave that conclusion to others that were on, on the other side of that conversation, but I have to tell you from our perspective, we feel strongly that we achieved that objective and we're excited and encouraged to be able to report to you that a number of issues that were identified in these community meetings are being addressed and will continue to be addressed. Reagan has been in the Kendall Square area now for 10 years. This new building represents new opportunities for engagement, new opportunities to become more integrated into the community and they are embracing that wholeheartedly. Corey Martin would like to be able to give the board a little bit of flavor on that issue. But I promise you it's only a little bit because I know we're eager to move on to the design issues, but since, since we needed to prove our bona fides on this, I'm hoping the board might be able to give us a moment or two just to let you know how we're engaging because in many ways, this is a level of interaction that I don't think the board would typically see with applicants for projects. Might be one of the virtues of this, not being a developer, but being a really academic philanthropic mission. So with that, I would ask Ms. Martin to speak to the board.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you to the members of the planning board for this opportunity to share with you a bit more about the Reagan Institute. As Jim said, I'm Corey Martin, the Chief Operating Officer for the Reagan Institute. I'll, I'll make this fairly quick. Jim kind of hit on a lot of the points. But as you heard at the first hearing, Dr. Walker has, has led the Reagan to where it is today, an institute that's not just committed to critical research, but an institute that embraces its core values, which includes a strong commitment to our diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives and collaboration with partners, including the community around us. As Jim mentioned, we've been in the Kendall Square community, it's been our home for the last 11 years and we're really looking forward to integrating into our community and, and developing partnerships further. We're not looking to reinvent the wheel, but partner with already existing organizations who are doing incredibly important work. Historically, we've had the opportunity to engage with nonprofits and some of those examples are the AIDS Action Committee, where we've participated in a walk run and, and our own employees have done their own fundraising. The past holiday season, we had a clothing drive where the proceeds went to the Margaret Fuller House. And for Black History Month, we had a fundraiser for the Boston Black Lives Matter chapter and raised over $1,000 from our workforce. So these efforts really demonstrate a commitment, not just from Reagan leadership, but from the broader Reagan workforce and community. I also want to note that we recognize the lack of diversity in the field of science and are committed to creating opportunities for underrepresented minorities in science. Now that we'll have a permanent home, we're excited to grow our community engagement program and we've had, as Jim mentioned, several conversations in the last three to six months with community members and nonprofits. The last year, I quickly will just note that it's been a difficult year for everyone and challenging and busy. Specifically for Dr. Walker, our director, who led the institute through the pandemic while also supporting new COVID research efforts. He also prioritized making time available to educate community members on what was going on with COVID. I believe you heard a bit in the last hearing, some of the seminars in which he co-facilitated with one of his, one of his mentees, Derry Sullivan. It included a high school seminar with the Cambridge Ridge Latin School, Cambridge Public Library, and then some other high school seminars focused on students and community members. This again demonstrates a commitment from our leader that community engagement is important, as well as the development of future leaders in this field. I'll quickly review the commitments we've made this year and into the future that are on the slide. So some are internships for high school and undergrads. We had a summer internship program that we had to put on hold due to COVID, but we are looking to relaunch that in the summer of 2022. And that will include both a, a high school program and an undergraduate program. We've redone the curriculum and are excited by this and we are committed for spots for students in the neighborhood and in the community. As mentioned at the hearing, the first hearing, we have allocated five designated subsidized spots to neighborhood families for our new childcare facility. We're also excited about a Reagan, the creation of a Reagan Science Club, which will focus in on high school students and we'll be launching that this fall. We also, once we occupy the building, we'll be hosting an annual Reagan Open House where community members, partners can come and join us and learn more about the work that we're doing and, and that first year, obviously get a tour of the new building. We also have been, have offered opportunities for use of the, our multipurpose room and seminar rooms in the new building, specifically for neighborhood and local community organizations. And again, that will happen in the fall 2024 when we occupy the building. Jim mentioned that we'll continue to collaborate with the Cambridge Public Library and Cambridge Schools throughout, throughout all of Cambridge. I, I did mention that we have done a significant amount of work in meeting some incredible community leaders. And Jim mentioned the opportunity that we had in working with Cheryl Patterson Monroe and Kathy Williams at ACT and, and I just want to reemphasize how critically important of a liaison they've been for us with the tenants of Newtown Court and Washington Elms and sharing more about our building and the programs. We've had some great dialogue with them to address questions, concerns and incorporate suggestions and ideas from them. And, and now we have a direct connection to the residents through Cheryl and Kathy and we're excited about that so that we can continue to update them on progress with this building. We've also had the pleasure of speaking with John Lindamood and Cam Molly from Cambridge Housing Authority's Resident Services Department. Dr. Walker joined us for one of those calls and we're pleased to say that we've got a plan in place to partner together, including items, internship for some of the students in their programs and for some of our faculty and leaders to join and, and be a part of career panels, mock interviews, et cetera. So very excited that that plan is in place. In addition, we've begun conversations with Erin McCarty at the Community Arts Center, Dr. Kimberly Massenberg at the Margaret Fuller House and Catherine Feniman with Tutoring Plus. We're close to confirming specific ways we can join their important efforts that are directly supporting the local community. And we're looking forward to solidifying these plans in the upcoming weeks, hopefully before the end of July. these plans in the upcoming weeks, hopefully before the end of July. As you can see, we're looking for tangible commitments and partnerships, and we plan on demonstrating our commitment through our actions in the next few years. Again, thank you for the opportunity to share more of our community outreach engagement work now and into the future. And I'll turn it back over to you, Jim.
Thank you, Corey. We now want to be able to share with the board, obviously, the design modifications that have been made to both the building and the open space. It should be noted that the changes you're seeing this evening and are contained in our submittal were informed by design meetings with the Community Development Department as well as the input we received at the community meetings, both of those exchanges. And of course, the third component informing these decisions were comments by planning board members. And I think planning board members will see in two specific areas where suggestions were fully embraced by the applicant. And I know the feeling on the applicant's side is those suggestions have led to a much improved building. So me good to share those with you, and Michael Hinchcliffe from Payette is going to go through those slides.
Thank you very much, Jim. Good evening, members of the planning board. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Michael Hinchcliffe, an architect with Payette. Our offices are located at 290 Congress Street in Boston. The image before you was a great reminder to us of the comments that you gave at our last hearing, that the Reagan Institute is not only in Kendall Square, but is in the larger neighborhood of Cambridge itself. So what I'll describe in the next few minutes are some of the input and changes that have taken place to the building as a response, as Jim said, to your comments, as well as the neighborhood engagement that we had with members of Newtown Court, Washington Elms, the Port, and larger Cambridge during our neighborhood meetings. So on the next slide, we divided this into roughly two sections. The first, I'll take you through the changes that were noted, as Jim said, in the updated package to the landscape and publicly accessible open space of the building, including the revised design, and some of the features that we've implemented in response to commentary and feedback. And then after that, Kevin will give you an update on some of the building's exterior features and sustainability features as we look to finish this presentation for you within the next 15 minutes. So on the next page, we'll see one of the most significant features in this image from our original planning board hearing on March 23rd. Moving to the next slide, we have now implemented in compliance with the new green roof regulations, a green roof on the building. So on the next slide, we were able to incorporate a green roof, maintaining as well the future solar potential, as well as the rainwater capture that we described, adding extra filtration. This was a challenge for the team, given the quick turnaround from the passage of that legislation, but we're very pleased to report that we were able to be in full compliance with that new legislation for the city of Cambridge. On the next slide, we see here the landscape plan that we presented to you in mid-March. Since then, there are relatively significant improvements throughout the landscape. I'll describe them in clockwise fashion from the northeast around the site. As we go to the next slide with the new revised plan, we'll see that these inputs have become significant in terms of the amount of welcoming public space and accessible and activity space for the public. The corner garden at the intersection of Portland and Main Street, improvements to the main entry plaza, the covered entry plaza in the middle of this block, and then as well to the covered Reagan Plaza to the northeast at the intersection of Main and Albany, as well as finally down at the southwest corner at the intersection of Portland and Main. So starting at the northwest corner on the next slide, you'll see the image that we presented in March 23rd of the approach from Newtown Court. Commentary from the board, as well as the neighbors and CDT, indicated that we can make improvements here in terms of the welcoming nature of the landscape and the site to the public. So on the next slide, you'll see that we've added a new series of benches and pathways that welcome the public into the shaded overhang of the building adjacent to the multipurpose room just behind the full-height glazing. This includes new low plantings, trees, and flower gardens, as well as benches and backs. We also realized that this was an important location for a possible marker, a community marker or historic marker, making reference to the structure that was here in the past as well as greater community ties. So we see at this prominent location, a very great opportunity for working over the next few months to incorporate a significant element here that signals that the public is welcome to enter into the public space along Main Street. As we move to the next image, this was the view of the covered entry courtyard with the Oculus or sky window at the main entry. Here, we received, I think, a really good challenge to look at this critically, to see if there are ways, again, that we could better activate the space for beneficial use, as well as looking at some of the environmental characteristics. I'll describe a little bit of those later, but if we advance to the next slide, we'll see some key features here. The first around programming. We realized that this space was an excellent opportunity for a public performance space. So the covered plaza with tables and chairs and benches has now been provided with power to allow this to be a space for public performances or other gatherings to take place under the shaded cover of the entry. We've also taken the opportunity to increase the size of the sky window or the Oculus. So with nearly 23% or 25% more opening, as well as a new profile to that opening, we've been able to increase the amount of sunlight, guaranteeing that the plantings in this area will be able to thrive, as well as looking at the configuration of those plants as well. On the next slide, as we advance around the site, this was a view of the urban grove or the seminar garden at the corner of Albany and Main Streets. Here again, we received some comments that there were some improvements that we could make to the space in terms of the activities and its features. So on the next slide, we'll see that we have made some of those changes. First off, here and throughout the site, we've included benches with backs to allow people of all ages and abilities to better enjoy the space throughout the year. We also made some modifications to the water feature or the fountain and the plaza behind it. You'll see in the next slide what we've done when, from this preliminary view, we had intended that this was a feature to provide year-round interest and background noise, as well as a sense of a connection with nature. In the revised design, we've taken that into consideration and lowered the fountain, still maintaining that element of connection with nature and water, but providing additional benches and a lower visual, less of a visual impediment to connect the plaza that's fully accessible behind the fountain with the pathways that lead to it. That plaza behind has also been identified as a potential location, as well as others under the main courtyard, for community vendors or food vendors to be installed, to be located here. We thought this is a great way, if permissible, to allow the space to be activated through uses for food and drink or other items throughout the year. On the next slide, you'll see we've also begun to consider this at night. Some of the comments were for us to look more critically at the lighting of the space. So we have, in conjunction with our lighting designers, made sure that we have adequate pedestrian lighting at the benches and on the plazas, the vertical surfaces, but also looked at installing a constellation of lights in the soffit here at the main cantilever over the Reagan Plaza, as well as the other cantilevers, to provide visual interest and illumination of these very stunning features of the building throughout the day and night. So as we move to the next slide, this was an overview of the landscape plan as presented in March 23rd. As I said, we've made significant improvements at the northwest, central, and northeastern portions to improve the accessibility and welcoming nature of the site. In summary, on the next slide, looking in detail at the northwest corner, we'll see the changes in plans to now create an easier pedestrian flow from Portland Street around to Main Street, bringing pathways and artwork under the building close to the multipurpose space, the inclusion of the open plaza with performance and vending spaces, as well as the fountain modifications. So very quickly, if we advance through the next two slides, we can return to these if there's more detail. So the corner garden does include new benches with backs, this historic marker or art installation, the performance space under the main sky window or Oculus, as well as two possible vendor locations. On the next slide, as we look at the northwest, the new lowered fountain with an increased plaza and more accessible plaza with spaces there for vendors. So moving now to the southern portion of the site, we realize that we have multiple facades and streets that we have bought. So at the south, we also did make modifications on the next slide to the intersection. And Portland Street is an important connector from the Port neighborhood and Cambridge through the site. We've created a new plaza with benches and additional art location to better improve the pedestrian flow from Portland Street across Albany Street. As I'll say in a minute, we've also reduced the curb cut of the loading dock. So to look at the curb cuts on the next slide, we had some questions about the drop-offs on Portland and Main Street. So we are continuing to work with the Public Works Department and the Street Department to refine these, but the drop-off at Portland Street is a full eight feet, nonimpeding traffic with a full eight feet of sidewalk. I think on the next slide, you'll also see the drop-off on Main Street, where we have increased some of the clearances and tolerances at the race cycle track. So here, we have an eight-foot-wide drop-off for ride-hailing services, the MGB, Mass General Brigham Shuttle, as well as other drop-off here on Main Street with an increased safety buffer to the race cycle track, and then a widened sidewalk acknowledging the larger pedestrian flow east to west on Main Street. And then finally, from the streetscape on the next slide, we were working with our civil engineers, traffic consultants, able to reduce the width of the main loading dock curb cut from 35 to 33 feet. So we have validated with the operational staff of the Reagan that all truck traffic and loading dock traffic is able to be accommodated in this new narrow curb cut, also coordinated with the entries and exits to the MIT garage across the street for the second curb cut for the parking garage located just to the east. So with that, if we move to the next slide, we can tell you a little bit more detail in response to some of your questions and concerns about some of the more technical aspects of the building, as well as some of the facade details. So first, I'll cover very briefly, as I said before, the Oculus or the sky window on the main entry plaza. So in response to your comments, working with our structural engineers and our landscape architects, we were able to increase the size of that opening by nearly 25%, 23% to be exact, as well as looking at the profile to better capture the sun from the south as it moves through. So here in the next two slides, we included some examples of some of the studies that we did. So here, looking from the ground plane at the, from humans and plants, at the amount of useful daylight as well as typical daylight, we've seen some moderate increases in the amount of usable daylight, as well as looking at the glare. But on the next slide, you'll see that we also looked at, from the planned perspective, the amount of sunlight that the various planters and benches would receive. So we feel quite confident with these, with the increase in size, the change in the profile, and the selection of plantings and locations of planters, that we're able to provide a very gracious and engaging sunlit space in this covered entry plaza at the bottom, at the street. So with that, I will transfer this over to Kevin, who will begin on the next slide to tell us a little bit about some of the improvements to the exterior. Very briefly for record, on this view, we see this is the view from Newtown Court, where we looked at from the March 23rd hearing with the landscape. In this next slide, this is our revised view with the landscape, in a way, pruned back to make sure that we ensure views of the multipurpose space and the visible activity of the building beyond. The next two slides show this view without landscape. So the next, our view from the March 23rd hearing, the building with the landscape removed, and now in this final view, the revised version. So Kevin, I'll let you complete the summary with some of the more interesting developments from the rest of the building.
Sure. Thanks, Michael. So as Michael has shown, a lot of the changes on the building have happened around the ground plane. And many of those images on the upper floors, it's very subtle changes, but actually, they've had quite a bit of difference on the building's performance just by tuning the fins. So if you would just advance the slide slightly. While we'd been working on the project, we'd been sort of tuning this exterior. And what this shows, just by actually refining some of the openings around the building and identifying some problem areas, whether it's on the northwest corner, you see we had some more intense solar radiation there, or similarly in one of the corners of the courtyard, or on the ends of the building, we found we could improve the performance greatly by just tuning the fins, and that's what we've done. And you can see just by these very subtle adjustments, we've increased and made a 46% improvement on the annual solar radiation benefit, as well as a 39% improvement in terms of mitigating the peak solar radiation in these areas. So we've made some significant developments. You really can't tell the difference on the exterior, and it's really interesting how these changes impact things. At the same time, if you advance the slide, we've been starting to study in how some of the profiles, some of the architectural elements, and what you're seeing here is a study, this is a foam model that's painted that we made in our shop, and it studies the profiles of the fins at the top of the building. You're looking at on the upper left-hand corner, that happens to be the top of the northeast corner, right in front of the penthouse. So there's very little window exposure there. And as these fins narrow as they go down the building, they taper and get smaller, and some of the fins you're seeing at the bottom are the smallest fins we have. And these are the type of things that we've been studying to really get a sense for how the building turns the corner, the shape, and actually the performance of the fins. So there's been a lot of sort of refinement that's gone on since we last met with you. In these next images, these are just showing you the current application of how these refinements have affected the facade. This is at the southern corner of the building or the tip of the building at the intersection of Albany and Portland Streets. On the next slide, next, please? You'll get a sense of also some refinements at the entrance along Albany Street. In particular, the fence that's shielding the daycare, we've lowered that significantly from six feet to four feet, and we'll show you a section a little bit later about that, as well as refining the soffit transitions and the play structure in the daycare areas. So if you advance the slide to the next image, it just gives you a sense of the play structure, the fence, this granite curbing that's used at the base of the fence, as well as the watercourse transitioning to the brick at the entrance building. In the next slide, this just shows in a little more detail the change in the fence at the daycare garden. And so, for instance, in the upper image, that's what we last had at our last meeting, where we had a six-foot fence on top of the curb. The daycare area is actually above the street level, so you see that sectional change there. And we're using that sectional change to our advantage to lower the fence. And so you have about two feet of sectional change and a four-foot fence on top of that to provide that. And so it's changing the personality of the building at that corner quite a bit with that transition. So what I'd like to do next is go through some of the sustainability items in the building. If you could advance the slide, please? So we're designing this to lead gold performance level. And what that means is we're going to have a green roof that's solar-ready. We have high-performance walls, windows, and roof. We actually have natural ventilation in the office areas of the building, and there's actually a lot of that, particularly along Portland Street. We have high-efficiency HVAC equipment and heat recovery, all LED lighting with photo occupants and centers. We're using low-carbon concrete and CMU. The building's convertible to all-electric, and so that'll make it easy to do that if that becomes a requirement in the future. 50% of the parking is convertible to electrical vehicle charging, and we're, the building's compliant with Payette's healthy materials policy. So this just gives you a sense of the green design measures that we're employing in the building. It's actually a very green building as far as laboratories go. Next? So in closing, what I'd like to do is just summarize some of the reference materials, the materials that we're using on the building, and then transition to a model, where Michael's going to do a quick spin-around to just show you some of the changes with the Oculus and the landscape that's occurred on the model. So if we could just advance the slide. So these are the building materials. They're all They're all the same materials that we showed you the last time. The textured brick perforated copper at the at the loading dock doors, FRP on the upper portions of the building as well as these large two story structural glazing portions around the base of the building, particularly along Main Street. And the FRP coloration is going to be very much like limestone in some of the institutional buildings nearby. Next, this just gives you a sense of how these materials translate to the different facades. We're using the along the lower floors of the building, we're using the the brick along the base, the multi-story glass facing Main Street as well as the wood window wall around the daycare area as well as the south entry and along Portland Street. On the next slide, the next slide, please. This just shows you how these materials map with the current facades. This is the Albany Street facade. And on the next slide, we're looking on the Portland Streets facade, you can see where the wood window wall is and where the brick transition is right at that seam where the large lecture hall or auditorium is at the northwest corner. Next. And this is the way the materials map looking from the Main Street facade. So with that, we're going to transition to the model. These just show, you know, some of the swaths of these material sequences along the base and the the top portions of the building. So you get a sense for the variation in the sides and a much higher level of transparency at the courtyard garden along Main Street at the upper levels. Next. And just a few views of these tapered profiles of the FRP on the facade. So with that, that's the the end view. And this is the current view from the northeast corner of the building, looking into all those changes that Michael was talking about with the landscape. So we're very pleased with our progress and the refining, particularly the refinements we've made on the landscape. We wanted to thank you for some of your remarks because I think it really helped clarify some particularly critical areas where the the city and the building come together. It helped us a lot. And so Michael's going to do a very quick spin around the building to give you a sense of how this is translated with our model.
Sure. So thank you very much, Kevin. So before before I do that, I want to acknowledge Madam Chair and other members of the board that we did exceed our thirty minute time limit by a few minutes. So I leave it up to you if you would like us to to take a quick tour of the model or not.
I appreciate the consideration, but I think the board always benefits from seeing seeing the model. So yes, please, please do go ahead and give us that quick tour.
So I think if you could. So I'm not sure if you can hear me here.
Yeah, we can hear you, Michael.
Okay, perfect. So here, moving around the model along Main Street, here is a view of Main Street and the main entry. So from Portland Street to the main cantilever. Or Kevin, maybe if you want to describe as I move along, that might be easier.
Kevin, you're muted.
Oh. I'm sorry. I thought I was giving. So on the northeast corner, you saw a fairly dense canopy of trees and you could actually see the lower fence around the daycare garden, the sculptural column and play structure that's at that corner. It's a fairly important design element as well as a program element for the garden. The street trees along Albany Street, the way the daycare garden wall transitions to the building entry along Portland Portland Street. I should note that there is an additional sky garden in that aperture that looks into the the main entry, the main atrium there. So there will be vertical planting that is part of that sky garden that looks into the atrium. And then as you transition around the northwest corner, you'll start to see some of the changes that we've made in the landscape that really opened towards Newtown Court, inviting people in to get closer to the activity on the inside of the building there, but also sheltered from the intersection. So it'll be a fairly comfortable place to sit. As we go back, that is the wider Oculus. And again, just ending on the northeast corner, looking back into that area. You'll see that there is some actually, we've tried to put some of these food kiosks in the landscape here. So you can just get a sense of the scale of those and where they might be. We're quite pleased in that there's a number of suitable locations. So on this, on this level, it'll give the proprietor some options in terms of where they think is the best location for their particular food and retail. So we could see this might vary depending on the time of the year. So for instance, vendors might want to be in the sun in the colder months. They might want to be in the shade in the cooler months, in the hotter months. So we think these are some really good opportunities. The other thing I wanted to mention is Michael sort of gave you a summary of sort of the day lighting in the the entry court garden. We did study the cantilever on the northeast side and actually the lighting there was tremendous. And so the lighting levels in the main entrance were were lower actually than the area under the cantilever where the food kiosks are. So there's a tremendous amount of daylight. I think it's mostly because of the two story height, but also because it's fully open on three sides. So that's a quick summary of where we are and we're open for all your questions and comments.
Kevin and Michael, could you like just go back to the model photo for just a minute? Minute and I'd like you to point out to the board the unique aspect of how you've treated the rooftop mechanical equipment here and the way that it's totally enclosed and located within the height limit in the zoning district. And that we're not, we're not looking to avail ourselves of the height exception. So maybe you could just briefly go through the heights at both corners of the building and what's happening with mechanical equipment.
Sure. So what you're seeing seeing in this model is that you're seeing the skylight, which is one item, which is closest to the sort of the atrium in the court. And then along Albany Street, there's two shrouds which are collecting all of the mechanical equipment and the exhaust stacks for the building. And then there's a smaller one along Albany Street. All of the mechanical equipment, the air handlers and things like that are all enclosed within the penthouse. And the louvers are actually located behind the screen wall that's in front of it. So all these things should be very, very discreet. And that happens to be also the area where the screen wall has the slenderest openings. There is, you know, one area where there's an area for water capture that happens to be above the balcony area at the top of the building here. So we're collecting stormwater. It's almost like a slope swimming pool at the at the top of the building to hold and retain stormwater. So that summarizes the roof. Is that everything you were looking for, Jim?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I believe that that concludes our design presentation. There is, there is one other aspect that we're happy to share with the board involving adjustments. Well, adjustments to the loading dock and traffic. There were concerns expressed about the size of the loading dock and its adequacy to accommodate loading vehicles. We provided data to the traffic department based upon the historical use of the loading dock at the current Reagan facility for the past ten years. And we were able to demonstrate and satisfy the traffic department. Mr. Chulman and Mr. Barr, Mr. Baxter all concluded that the dock, loading dock is adequately sized for the type of activity that this research institute requires. It was also, they did challenge us to see if we could make that thirty five foot wide curb cut for the loading dock, even to take a foot or two out of it. So our traffic engineers worked in that. So we did succeed in reducing that by three, two feet, which represents a change from the prior submission. So we want to acknowledge that. And then finally, in our last hearing, we did not have time to reach a presentation about our TIS, Traffic Impact Study that we submitted, was certified, and the expedences are quite modest. And Scott Thornton from Viness is here. He always complains because it's like the show is winding down, everyone's ready and to get to public comment. And now in comes Scott to talk about traffic. But it's fortunate the chair has such an appreciation for traffic and the work of the traffic engineers that we thought it might be appropriate, since one of the board's findings here under an Article nineteen Project Use Special Permit is a determination that there's no adverse impact on city traffic. And the TIS is the instrument that the board relies upon to make that. Maybe Mr. Thornton could just have a moment or two to walk you through that slide.
That would be fine.
Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Jim, for that introduction. Right. So so I think in terms of the traffic analysis and the transportation impact study, you know, we were pleased to be able to work with the Reagan Institute and this project team. The TIS that we developed followed the determination that was issued by Traffic and Parking September thirtieth of twenty twenty. We reviewed a total of one hundred and twenty seven of the Article nineteen criteria. P and T certified that study on October twentieth. And, you know, we also, the project also required a PTDM plan, which was approved by the PTDM Planning Officer in February of this year. We looked at seven intersections in the in the study area, looked at a number of accounts, historic data that was used due to the COVID nineteen pandemic complicating traffic data collection issues. But in terms of looking at the overall planning board criteria, we had about six of the indicators that were exceeded. And those really were related to existing conditions and not related to impacts due to the project. So there were, there were four conditions that were, or four exceedances that were related to cross pedestrian level service and impacts at crosswalks near the site and also the lack of bike lanes on Albany and Portland Street. So we also looked at parking for the project and, you know, the proposed ratio of point six five spaces per thousand square feet or one hundred and twenty spaces is less than either the current zoning or the or what's been identified in the K two C two zoning. But we feel that that's that's adequate to address the parking demands of the project as has been indicated and shown on some of the earlier slides. Cycle track, raised bicycle lane is proposed on the south side of Main Street. We're also proposing a curb extension with a crosswalk across Main Street at the intersection of Albany Street and Main Street. That complements one that's just to the east of that intersection. And we think that that's going to help to encourage pedestrian travel to the to some of the activity centers, make it easier for people to come to to the site and take advantage of the of the gardens and other features with the site. So I think in in conclusion, you know, the project will provide a low parking rate and commit to a to a very low, I should probably highlight this, that the the project is focusing and committing to a twenty seven percent SOV rate to encourage the use of sustainable transportation. They currently enjoy a very low SOV rate at the Kendall Square location. And they're looking forward to continuing to 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 provide that that rate. The proposed cycle track and crosswalk on Main Street will improve bicycle and pedestrian mobility. As I mentioned, the project on its own does not cause the exceedance of any of the Article nineteen criteria. And therefore, our conclusion is that the project has no substantial adverse impact on city traffic in the area. So I do have some slides available for to show the loading dock efforts that we went through, Madam Chairman. If I have those available, otherwise I know we're running low on or running long on time. So I'd be happy to turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you. Why don't we hold those slides for now? And then when we get to board questions, the board members may want some more detail. And if we need to pull them up, then we can. Do you want to get to the public hearing or public comment because this is a public hearing? Any members of the public who wish to speak should now click the button that says raise hand. If you are calling in by phone, you raise your hand by pressing star nine. As of five PM yesterday, the board had received no written comments on this case. Additional written communications received after five PM yesterday will be entered into the record. I'll now ask staff to unmute speakers one at a time. You should begin by saying your name and address and staff will confirm that we can hear you. And after that, you will have up to three minutes to speak before I ask you to wrap up.
Thank you, Chair Conley. Daniel Messpli here, managing public comment for this case. I do see one hand up at this time, which is Lee Ferris. So Lee Ferris, please begin by giving your name and address and I'll ask you to unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Lee Ferris and I am the president of the Cambridge Residents Alliance. My address is two six nine Norfolk Street. And let me get to my comments. I wasn't expecting to be first. So the planning board members should have received a letter from the Alliance of Cambridge Tenants. And the Residents Alliance has been following the discussions of the tenants from Washington Elms and Newtown Court, who are members of the Alliance of Cambridge Tenants with the staff people of the Reagan Institute. And we're aware that they have submitted a number of requests and a letter to the planning board as well as to the Reagan Institute. And we hope that you'll incorporate binding language, meeting their requests in the special permit. I don't want to speak for them, but since you, I got called first and I don't know who else is waiting to be speaking, I will speak about those things just a little bit. So specifically, the folks with ACT are looking for daycare slots that Reagan has said they will give five to the community. And ACT is asking for six so that each of the housing complexes can have three slots. And they are asking that the planning board make this both the specific numerical commitment as well as preference for Washington Elms Newtown Court families, a condition of the permit. And the ACT is also looking for job opportunities with some kind of specific percent allocated towards Washington Elms Newtown Court families. Regarding the use of meeting rooms by the community, we're asking that the planning board or ACT is asking that the planning board and the Cambridge Residents Alliance supports three specific details that the two classrooms and one auditorium will be available for occasional public the two classrooms and one auditorium will be available for occasional public use that Newtown Court and Washington Elms Tenant Council and the Alliance of Cambridge Tenants will have a preference in the spaces booking process and that the auditorium will be made available at least once a month and each of the two classrooms made available once a week. And we ask that the planning board make a condition of the special permit that there be signs welcoming people in the public space so we're suggesting two signs that remind everybody that all are welcome to make use of the public space. And lastly, we still think that there is too much parking. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands at this time Chair Connelly. Oh, one just popped up. The next speaker is Dan Totten. Dan, please begin by unmuting yourself and giving your name and address.
All right, what if you pop so I think that Cheryl Patterson Monroe is trying to speak and I think we're all really waiting to hear from her but I'm not sure she's she can we see if she's in the list or try we're trying to get get her to speak and I would really prefer to go after her.
So she is showing up as a participant but had had not raised her hand.
Okay, all right, well.
There we go.
There we go. Okay, I'm going to ask Cheryl to please begin by unmuting yourself and giving your name and address.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Patterson Monroe. I'm the co-chair for ACT for affordable housing and I'm also a resident of Newtown Court. Six Newtown Court. I wanted to piggyback off of Lee Ferris. We met with the residents and Reagan and community organizers and she outlined the proposal that ACT and the residents of Newtown Court submitted to the planning board along with Reagan and we also submitted the response to our proposal and then I apologize to Reagan. We responded to their response and at the last minute so we actually went over everything that the right the residents did get together and speak and we drew up the proposal working with the not just with the ACT members but with the Newtown Court and Washington Elms members as well. So I'm I'm sure everyone has a copy of that proposal. It seems like there's a lot of concern about other organizations that seem to have jumped on board and I think I've said this before without it's there seems to be no priority when it comes to Newtown Court and Washington Elms and we find that very discerning that you know every month I mean even CHA is meeting with Reagan you know CHA is not the voice of the residents for Newtown Court and Washington Elms. And I I don't think anything should be agreed upon until the residents of Newtown Court and Washington Elms proposal is in hand and in writing. You know, because they're really the people that is greatly affected not not that the surrounding areas, the high school area for it all those aren't important but the main issue is Newtown Court and Washington Elms and people understanding that these residents speak for themselves and not even CHA or anyone else speaks for them. And nor the other organizations, they speak for themselves. They're not speaking for Newtown Court and Washington Elms. And I really want the planning board to really look at the proposal that we had given to Reagan and you know think of the residents, think of their needs and what's what you know they're a really huge part of this community. You know, and we've been working very tirelessly with the ACT members, the board members, the co-organizers and the residents of Newtown Court. That's their voice that's on that proposal. So I appreciate you guys taking your time out to hear you know that you know ACT is the voice of the residents and ACT is residents of CHA. But CHA I must stress again is not the voice of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dan Totten. Dan, please begin by unmuting yourself and giving your name and address.
Awesome, thank you. My name is Dan Totten. I live at fifty four Bishop Allen Drive in Central Square and thank you for letting Cheryl go first. So I really want to want to make the case. So we've had we've had some really good discussions. Everybody's done their best to to meet people where they are and try to try to hear concerns and they the the concerns really revolved around these six points that that Lee that that Lee made and that that I believe were sent earlier by Cheryl to the to the planning board. And so there are just a couple of things in here that we were able to reach agreement on and we it would be a really good idea to make these things conditions of the special permit. So the first thing is the the commitment to have five community slots scholarships in the daycare. I think it should that 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 makes sense to to really put that in writing and make sure that's committed as well as the preference for Washington Elms Newtown Court families. I think that the details around the community meeting rooms that were discussed in the in the community meetings with us verbally should be agreed to in writing and that includes you know the the which you know how many spaces are available. And you know giving the Tenant Council and the Alliance of Cambridge Tenants priority for booking those spaces because often the tenant community doesn't have access to the same types of spaces that more privileged groups in the neighborhood might have in terms of privileged community groups and and frequency. We want to understand how often that will be made available. And then finally, the the two welcoming signs seem like a pretty basic one that could be made a condition. Now, I understand that typically condition conditions like this are more or or maybe not not I I think you you have all the justification you need because it says including but not limited to when they list types of conditions that you could do and if we think that and and it says to consider the purpose and the intent of the zoning code as well when trying to make these conditions and it said and so if we think that the zoning code was created with a racist intent as we've heard a lot in the last few weeks, the only just thing to do here is to is when considering the intent and considering whether to impose safeguards and conditions deemed necessary to protect the surrounding neighborhood and preserve community values is to make these is to make these specific conditions part of the special permit because helping low income people with free childcare giving them a space to meet as a community and putting up signs that say everybody is welcome here are all their own ways in essential for protecting the surrounding neighborhood and preserving community values of racial equity and economic justice. We've had a great discussion on this amazing community process and I hope the planning board will cement it and and we can call this a huge win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to just give an extra moment Chair Connelly if it's okay to see if maybe there are any other attendees here who wish to speak. I don't see any other raised hands at the moment but I'll I'll give it another moment. I'm not seeing any additional hands go up so I'll turn it back to you Chair.
All right, thank you Daniel. Great, we will now move from public comment to board discussion. And if this were to continue to another public hearing, there would be another opportunity for public comment at that time. And of course, additional written comments may also be submitted. We've received memos on this application from staff at Community Development Department, Traffic Parking and Transportation Department and the Department of Public Works. And we have staff available at least from CDD here to answer any questions. Are there questions at this time from board members for either the staff or the applicant? So hands immediately. I love it with a year on see and and people are getting really good with the raise hand button. Tom, let's start with you.
I just have really one question for the applicant and I think it just goes to the heart of what was presented by the community. Understanding that the response to the response came at the eleventh hour and Reagan probably hasn't had a chance to to formally respond. I wanted to give them that opportunity and further understand also that many of the conditions are not despite the the last argument, I I don't believe enforceable by the building department and and not really proper conditions for a special permit but that's my opinion but I I think rainbows might be able to break out here if we could hear from the applicant on how they're feeling about negotiations.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to address that if that would be appropriate.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
As we noted at the outset, the Ms. Patterson Monroe, her colleagues at ACT have been very helpful in facilitating conversations we've had. If you have not had the opportunity to see what was submitted by ACT today, they they included their proposal in the Reagan response. And you'll see that in principle nearly all of the issues and there are only a half dozen issues that were identified by by in the process are things that Reagan agreed to early on. Some of them represent initiatives that Reagan put forth on its own such as the the daycare commitments. There was a request about a few other items that couldn't be accommodated. One was to allow for participation on the shuttle. The shuttle is operated and run by Mass General. It's not Reagan Shuttle. They don't have the ability to expand the ridership to include others and similarly there was a request for a percentage set aside for employees for particular street or neighborhood. Candidly, that's just not doable or frankly practical but the spirit around open houses making those opportunities aware, that's all embodied in in what's what's been the response and that's why we took the time at the outset to let the board know that the engagement here isn't limited to the construction phase of this building. There really is a commitment across a broad spectrum and I certainly have great respect for who speaks for the tenants here. But as was pointed out, we met with Counselor Simmons and she was quick to add that there is a slightly broader community beyond the immediate buildings and she put us in touch with the Black Pastors and other groups in the port. So we have reached out to Margaret Full House and these other organizations that we pointed out so I think it's been quite robust but I would note that Mr. Snabich's comments are quite appropriate. None of these items I would respectfully suggest are the type of enforceable conditions that would be appropriate in a special permit where the criteria is set forth in the ordinance. There is however a commitment to all of those things and we 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 are not looking this building is never going to be sold. This isn't going to be a different operator. Reagan is here to stay. They've got it an impressive track record now and their view is that they want to continue to engage with the neighborhood but it's 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 been an area frankly where there has been maybe the specifics. I think we offered five. There was an ask for eight on the on the on the daycare. Similarly, there was there was a few other questions but the concepts that were discussed, we had general agreement that we want to go forward and implement them.
Okay, thank you for that response. Lou.
Yeah, just a couple of actually clarifications. And and this may be me having some of these projects blend together. Is there any electrical shaded windows or glazing on this project? I thought I read it somewhere on the
I would think one of the of the architects could address that. I'm not aware candidly if there are but I don't recall any discussion about it but maybe Mr. Sullivan wants to.
Michael, do you want to answer this one more fully?
Sure, so we the sunshade system in the building are the fixed fins that Kevin described in his response. We do have window shades on the interior of the building that are manual in most in most spaces to provide interior interior sun shading or solar control and there are motorized sunshades and screens window shades provided at the multipurpose room and the and the seminar room to provide glare control but we do not have electrically operated exterior sunshades.
No, electric tinted windows.
No, no, we do not.
It may be just blending in too many of these proposals. Another question, in its original condition was was the fence at the daycare, was that originally positioned on top of the granite wall?
It was. It was originally an eight foot a six foot fence on top of the granite wall that with the grade change and the elevations to stay above the floodplain had resulted in an eight foot high fence from the pedestrian walkway. That's where we made a modification to lower the fence to four feet from the daycare side that when combined with the six foot curb provided the code minimum of of six feet with the two foot curb provides the six foot code minimum for daycare regulations.
So this is a code item, the six foot height because to tell you the truth, to tell you the truth, it still creates quite a visual barrier here and especially if it is covered in artwork, it will be even less penetrated. Kind of creates a construction fence at the entrance to this building in perpetuity. Doesn't seem it it seems a little much and if it's a code item, I guess that's what we'll have to deal with.
It it is. So Corey Martin and and other members of the design team have been working with the proposed operator of that facility and a security fence around the play area is a requirement for there. But we have reached out as as others said to partner with the community art organization or others to incorporate artwork into the patterning and design of that fence and I think in in the image that Kevin showed earlier, the desire is to have that to be as transparent as possible.
But it is not very transparent with the fence itself and never and if you cover it with artwork, it will be even less transparent. It's just it's a big dock fence along that whole perimeter of the building. It's just kind of off putting. And one other question about exhaust from the labs, will they be penetrating the portals on the roof?
So the the enclosures that Kevin described as we were circling the model will house the fans that will that will supply the that will provide the exhaust from the building. So those are full those are behind the screen walls above the above the restructure.
So none of your ventilation from your labs will penetrate the enclosure and stick above it. Normally, this is the case. We are told that all of your all vent hoods and so forth must protrude from the enclosure.
The enclosures are sized to provide the minimum clearances around those fans so that the top of the fan exhaust can be coincident with the top of those enclosures.
This will be a very sore spot if at the end of this show we see ventilation sticking above these. I'm I'm just cautioning because this has happened before and we have always we're always told that they need to penetrate the enclosure.
Understood.
Mary?
Thanks Catherine. So in regards to the fence around the playground area, I I I understand what you're saying about the need for security and meeting code. I think one of the things you were saying in response to Lou's questions was that perhaps you know where it is that kind of perforated screen that artwork would be incorporated sort of in the perforations. So you might have like an outline of kids playing or something like that so that it's not necessarily going to be artwork on top of a screen but rather you know sort of it'll be like an illusion through the screen.
Yes, that's correct. It would be integral with the perforation of the screen and the the pattern itself would be the perforation and so and we can control the amount of transparency that's desired you know based on the the patterning, the patterning of the artwork, but it's not a multi-layer system.
Correct, okay. So I think you know that that should be an item for ongoing review so that you know we get to agreement on what that level of transparency is. In regards to some of the issues you've discussed with the the tenants, I think somebody just to some of the issues you've discussed with the tenants, I think somebody just brought up the idea of parking. And I know you're below what is required. I'm just curious as to, if you could quickly summarize how you determine that 120 spaces is what's needed? Is that based on what you have today or projected growth, or how did you come to that number?
We can have Scott Thornton get into the details, but one of the things we did do is look at the commuting experience currently, what the current capacity is, and the extent to which visitors to the building are only there for short periods of time. And in some cases, they're arriving from MIT. In other cases, they're arriving from Mass General, and they're not expected to take vehicles. It has the current, the current Reagan Institute participates in the annual PTDM surveys around commuting patterns associated with the Technology Square Garage. So that data informed of the determination around the parking supply. We then made the case to the traffic department that a reduced parking supply here was warranted. And as you may recall, in their memo, they support our reduced numbers. So we're about 12 or 14 spaces below the required amount. But we have such a high mode split here, and candidly, a demographic of younger employees that seem to not be as reliant on single occupant vehicles.
Okay. And I'm just wondering, based on the comments that you were hearing from the community, did you take a second look at those numbers to see if you might be able to reduce them any further?
We had studied it pretty extensively. And in fact, we were, we were more aggressive. And I'll be candid, I counseled my client that they're asking for less. And we spend most of our time in negotiations with the traffic department trying to get that supply to be robust enough. Because in a for-profit development case, it's a revenue opportunity to lease those spaces to your tenants. We don't have that going on here. So yeah, we understood the sentiment behind fewer cars. That's why the PTDM plan is, we quickly agreed to measures in the PTM plan that are really geared towards reducing vehicles.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying. I appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions from board members? All right, then we can move to discussion. Who wants to kick us off with discussion? Mary, since you had the floor last, we can start with you.
Why not? So I want to thank everyone on your team for both the architectural and the open space changes, as well as all of the work that you did with the community, I think. I understand their interest in wanting something in writing, but I do think you are still at a point where you're back and forth. And as Tom and others have said, some of those things aren't necessarily enforceable by the building department or appropriate for the special permit. However, that being said, I do think the fact that you've made such great strides is really encouraging. And I think, I think you are kind of looking at this as an opportunity almost for kind of a new model of how, you know, multi-lingual, you know, diverse and multi-socioeconomic communities can interact with a nonprofit organization that is contributing so much at a very high level to the world. You can show that not only can you contribute at the high level, but sort of at the everyday level, too. And I think that's, that's really commendable. So I would encourage you to keep up those efforts. And, you know, perhaps shortly after the building is opened or within, you know, whatever period of time is appropriate, I think it would be very interesting for you to come back to the planning board and just give us an update on how this relationship is working. Because I think we need more and more of these models. And so what works and what doesn't is something that I think we would all benefit to hear about. I like the open space changes very much. I really, I appreciate what you did at the corner across from Newtown Court. I think it's much more welcoming. Signage, I think, would be very, very appropriate there, again, welcoming people. But I think just sort of opening that up and allowing for the access sort of in, towards the building in that area is terrific. I like the idea of the vendors. I think the last time we talked about, you needed to give people a reason to go and use the space. And I think, you know, that that starts to do it. And then the idea that maybe there would be some sort of performances there periodically, I think is a real positive. I also think you have made very good efforts on reducing the number of parking spaces and putting forth the PTDM measures that you will, you know, be enacting. So all in all, I think, I think you've done a great job. And the building is beautiful. And I look forward to seeing you progress. And I really, I just want to thank you for all the work that you do at the institute. I mean, when I think about where we were a year ago and where we are today with COVID, you know, it's really, it's, as someone who was an English major in college and reads a lot of books, the idea that there are people like you can figure all of this out is really astounding to me. But I thank you for it. And I think I'll shut up now.
Thanks, Mary. Hugh?
I can't stop anything that Mary has said. I've been full agreement with all of the sentiments she expressed. This is a great project.
All right. Steve?
Yeah, I chime in. I think it's a fabulous project. It's really, it's going to be a landmark architectural building in this building. You know, we have a number of, we have approved a number of good buildings, fine buildings. And sometimes, you know, the architect's aspiration and our aspiration is that it simply be an appropriate building and a building that simply fits in. This building exceeds that level of design. This is an extraordinary building. It doesn't fit in. It does better than merely fitting in. And as I say, I believe that it will be an architectural landmark in the building. I'm proud that this building is being constructed in our community. I haven't mentioned all of the other details, but most of the details that I have seen are very appropriate and good, the landscaping and so forth. But for me, at this moment, I'm focusing on the big picture. And the big picture, fabulous building. Congratulations to all of the parties involved. I'm looking forward to approving it. And I'm looking forward to seeing it in reality in just a couple of years.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Ted?
Yes, well, I agree with everything that my colleagues have said. I liked the building a lot before. I like it even more now. I applaud, well, applaud's not the right word. I'm very happy that the planning board insisted that there be further community input. And I was struck by the fact that it does not seem that the community had any opposition to the building per se, but we're looking for, you know, certain benefits in the use of the building, which the proponent has mostly agreed to. And I think is to continue with the discussions. But, you know, and I certainly applaud the roof line and the fact that all of the mechanicals are hidden. But like Lou, I will be very annoyed if what ends up being constructed is not what's been shown to us. But with that caveat, I think it's a beautiful building and agree that it will become a landmark in the area.
In theory, that shouldn't be possible, that it is built in a way other than what we have seen and approved.
Well, it's, in reality, it has turned out that way on various other projects.
In fairness, I would only observe that on occasion, buildings get approved at this level, and the tenants and their particular needs are unknown. In this instance, the operator is the developer. So there's a keener understanding of what the mechanical equipment needs are. So I think the likelihood of that scenario that admittedly occurs sometimes when, when the tenant is selected and they bring in their mechanical engineer, and all of a sudden, they're looking for equipment that maybe wasn't depicted on images shared with the planning board. That's, in my experience, where these things tend to happen. We don't have that situation here.
And we understand that. But when there is a change in those circumstances, you need to come back to us. And sometimes that doesn't happen.
Right, agree.
Tom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I agree with my colleagues. But everybody knows that I think design matters, and it's a beautiful project. I also very much appreciated the reference to the fact that they were tuning the design, tuning the landscape, tuning the elevations, and performance was changing immensely. These are the modern tools of a designer that can use computational design to do such things, make things more beautiful and actually work even better. So I hope that tuning keeps going, and I'm confident it will with the project. So design matters. Planning also matters. So I very much appreciate the direct response to our request that they reach out to the neighbors. And the project is even stronger because, because planning matters. So reduced parking, they're asking for a special permit, special consideration around that issue. I think we discussed that. We have no objection to that. They've reduced that curb cut. So they've tried to address our concerns about that maximum curb cut. I appreciate that effort. I think we're good to go on that. They're looking for an exemption for floor area ratio in the basement. I see no reason why consideration shouldn't be given to that request as well. Has no effect on the, on the city, that exemption. So it should be granted. So I have only one complaint. And it has to do with the handheld camera around the model. There are devices that allow you to do such a model show without causing all the planning board members to get airsick. So can you get one of those handheld gantry things? I had to turn off the computer because I was going cross-eyed. So I missed most of that tour. But other than that, I'm not going to hold up the special permit on those grounds, although I was tempted. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Have I missed anyone? Lou, did you have any comments beyond your questions?
Not really. I'm glad that everyone worked so hard and produced a very beautiful building. Originally, I wasn't really that inclined to like this building. But the more I looked into it, the more I looked into the design, it came forward. My only holdout is the fence. I really don't like this fence. I don't like its location. I don't like, I don't like its location on the stone wall. Looks like it should be on the other side so that we would have some kind of public seating on that side to make it more welcoming. It's just a really visually, and it's just an obstruction to me. And it's not enough to hold this project up. But it's just, it's just a shame that it has to be at the center.
Okay. So just to add my two cents, I really want to echo what my colleagues have said about the community engagement. For better or for worse, you have solidified in my mind that it is worth the planning board holding these things up to make sure it occurs. Because the quality of the engagement here was really night and day. And I appreciate that the early difficulties were not anyone's, you know, due to lack of effort. But it was, I think, worth, for this planning board member, worth the wait to actually have these robust conversations around how these two neighbors are going to live in concert with each other. And I think both the operations of the building and the design have improved for everyone because of it. I do, I do think the one item from the proposals from Washington Alums Newtown Court that I do think is probably appropriate to include in a planning board special permit would be the signage regarding those public open spaces being open to the public. And I certainly, I certainly know, we've done that with EF on a couple of their special permits and the like. And so I would suggest to my fellow board members, if there isn't an objection, that including a condition that those two signs saying that those areas are open to the public would be an appropriate thing to do.
Madam Chair, I might suggest that that be, that the location, size of those signs and the wording could be covered during design review.
Absolutely.
We are fully committed, we are fully committed to that and want to do that in other measures to ensure the feeling that the public does indeed feel welcome in the space. We agree.
Terrific. Yeah, no, I agree that that is something that certainly, frankly, staff is very well-equipped to help guide you on. And if they have any concerns, they obviously can bring it to us. But that did seem like something we could reasonably include here. All right. So with that, we actually have to go through the findings for the various special permits requested. So let me walk us through that. I will go through the findings and just check and see at the end if there are any board members who have questions or concerns about making any of the required findings. So for the project review special permit, we need to find that the project will have no substantial adverse impact on city traffic within the study area upon review of the traffic impact indicators analyzed in the transportation impact study and the mitigation efforts proposed. And that the project is consistent with the urban design objectives of the city as set forth in section 19.30. For a special permit to reduce the required parking, we need to find that the lesser amount of parking will not cause excessive congestion, endanger public safety, substantially reduce parking availability for other uses, or otherwise adversely impact the neighborhood, or will provide positive environmental or other benefits to the users of the lot and the neighborhood, including assisting in provision of affordable housing units. Special permit to exceed allowed curb cut width, that the increased curb cut width will facilitate traffic and safety. Modification to building and site plan requirements, this project, we have to find that the project is consistent with the urban design objectives of the city as set forth in section 19.3. So those, the project review special permit and the modification to the building and site plan requirements both refer to those same objectives. Special permit for basement gross floor area exemption, we need to find that the users occupying such exempted GFA support the character of the neighborhood or district in which the applicable lot is located. And then we have to make our general special permit criteria findings. Do any board members have any questions about those findings or any concerns about making those findings? All right. As noted, we're going to include, as usual, the conditions listed in the staff memos, as well as the condition that two signs indicating that the public is welcome be incorporated onto the site, which subject to design review with CDD staff. Are there any other suggestions? Are there any other suggestions from board members or from staff at this time?
Catherine, this might already be included in the list, the CDD list, but just in case it isn't, because I, I don't remember everything that's in there completely. Can we just add in the focus on the fence, design review of the fence and the transparency of that?
Yes. Okay. So special, special attention in design review to the design of the fence.
Excuse me, the daycare fence, correct?
That is the daycare fence, yes. Jeff?
Thank you, Catherine. I just wanted to note, this is Jeff Roberts, I want to note a couple of things from the memo. And Daniel can add if I missed anything, but so one of the things related to announcement about retail is that the new, the revised plans show some potential kind of pop, what's known as, we're called pop-up for retail or kiosks, which we always have to note that that is a separate, it may be considered a separate principal land use, so it should be clear in the planning board's decision that you have permitted those uses to avoid any kind of doubt in the future. Under our new retail zoning, just based on how they appear, they might be categorized either as food stands or as temporary outdoor retail and consumer service uses, depending on if they're just kind of, you know, temporary, whether they're there for a period of time, then broken down, or if they're kind of put in place for a long time. So I would note that the, the planning board in, in there, unless there's some objection, should make it clear in the decision that, that those uses are permitted. The other thing I was going to note was just on the signage. That is something that's covered in the CDD memo as well. And one of the things that, that we had noted, and I think we would, would maybe want to have reflected as a kind of a corollary to, to what, to what you just said, is that the city is working on some standardized signage that can be used for different kind of privately owned, but publicly usable spaces. And so we would ask that, that that be coordinated with, with the CDD staff to, to be kind of uniformly designed, if, if there is a, a kind of a uniform design that's used in other parts of the city.
Thank you for those. Jeff, Daniel?
Thank you, Chair Connolly. There was, I think, with, with the first hearing, and, and Jeff may be able to speak a little bit more to this, a, that the applicant had requested that the planning board make a finding related to a fault control plane setback regulation at the, I think, the northwest corner of the site. I don't know if the revisions to the design have corrected that issue, or if that was something that we just needed to, to acknowledge still.
No, that's addressed in the site plan special permit request that was contained in the chair's motion. There's been no change in design on that issue.
But, but I think Daniel raises a good point that that should be, that should be reflected in the decision as well. Just to put that on the record.
Okay. Lou?
Yeah, well, we were talking about the retail. I know in the original proposal, they were talking possibly some food trucks now and then. I don't know if there's any room left for them. But does that need to be included with the small retail food stands or is that a separate issue?
Well, I, I think so. A, a food truck, I don't know if there, we actually have a discussion this on the staff of whether it would be, whether we're talking about actual vehicles or whether they're talking about sort of push cart type. In either case, if it's, again, the distinction is if it's temporary, if it's only there for a short period of time and then it moves on, then it's considered a temporary outdoor retail establishment. If it's fixed there and it's there for, you know, more than 120 days out of the year, then it's a, it's a sort of more of a permanent food stand or kiosk. So that, that, that's how those uses would be covered under our new retail zoning.
So essentially, Jeff, then if I understand you, by making it clear that both those uses are permitted, we, that would cover any food truck as well if there were to be room for them to be there?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Do any board members have any concerns about the suggestions from staff for inclusion in, in the written decision of those various items or clarifications? Seeing a lot of shaking heads and no one indicating that they have a problem with any of them. Wonderful. All right. Let's see. Then is there a motion to grant the requested special permits with those conditions based on the board's finding that all the applicable special permit criteria have been met?
So moved.
Steve seconds. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Roll call on that motion, Lu Bachi?
Yes.
H Theodore Cohen?
Yes.
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Flynn?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Tom Sinavich?
Yes.
And Catherine Preston Connolly?
Yes.
That's all members voting in favor.
Okay, thank you, Daniel. Before we let people go on this one, I note that currently the deadline to file this decision is June 30th, 2021. So has, do we have a, a request for an extension?
Yes. Oh, sorry. I was, I was just going to say, and perhaps Jim or Swathy want, want to chime in as well. So the original deadline to file this decision was June 20, is June 21st, which just gives us a little bit of a tight turnaround. So if, if it's amenable to the applicant, what we are requesting is a modest extension to that deadline to the end of the month, which would be June 30th.
Got it. I misspoke. So June 30th would be the extended time.
Right, yes. And, you know, since you were so nice to us tonight, we're happy to accommodate that request. So we would, we'd be quite willing, but we appreciate the time and we know there's a lot of permits. We've got a tremendous pressure here to, to get started and the important work we're doing, we understand that, but Swathy did contact us and I did review it and Reagan is happy to provide the necessary time so that this can be done in a timely manner without putting undue stress or pressure on the system. So yes, if, if you need me to send something tomorrow, Swathy memorializing that, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. So, just so that I, okay, just so I'm clear on that. Do we need to vote on an extension or is the applicant being, oh, we do. Jeff is nodding. Yes, there's a vote on this. Okay, thank you, Jeff. All right, then do I have a motion to extend the deadline to June 30th for filing this decision?
Steve, so moved.
Louis second.
Louis seconds. A roll call vote.
Roll call on that motion, Lu Bachi?
Yes.
H Theodore Cohen?
Yes.
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Flynn?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Tom Sinavich?
Yes.
And Catherine Preston Connolly?
Yes.
That's all members voting in favor.
All right. Thank you all very much. Again, really appreciate your efforts on, on the project and on working with the community. And we encourage you to continue those discussions and look forward to seeing the outcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and board members. Very much appreciate all your time.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Good evening. All right, then we are moving on. We have a very quick number two item on, on the agenda. So that is the public hearing originally scheduled for this date on a zoning petition by the city council to amend Article 22 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Cambridge to add a new section 22.24.4 emissions accounting. We'll get the quick summary by CDD staff of what's before us tonight.
Thank you, Chair Connolly. Daniel Messpli again. I'll just quickly summarize. As Jeff mentioned during the CDD update, this is a hearing that has to be rescheduled because the ordinance committee was unable to schedule a hearing within the required statutory timeframe. The petition has since been refiled, so we've scheduled a new hearing for June 29th on, on this matter.
Right. Do any board members have questions on that? Seeing none, then is there a motion to continue the hearing on the zoning petition?
Steve, so moved.
Mary's second.
Roll call vote.
Roll call on that motion, Lu Bachi?
Yes.
H Theodore Cohen?
Yes.
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Flynn?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Tom Sinavich?
Yes.
And Catherine Preston Connolly?
Yes.
That's all members voting in favor.
Excellent. All right, now we have a number of extensions of time on various matters currently pending before the board. So going to just keep plowing through these administrative matters in hopes of getting us out of here in a reasonable timeframe tonight. Our next item on the agenda then is a request for an extension of time for the hearing and decision on planning board case PB 353, a special permit application for a cannabis retail store at 51 New Street. And we'll hear from staff on what the status of this one is.
Thank you, Chair. This is Swati Joseph on behalf of CDD. The board first heard this in September of 2019 and raised some issues to be resolved by the applicant. The case was continued further due to the pandemic. Staff have been in contact with the applicants and we have received a letter seeking an extension of time for decision to September 30th of this year.
Okay. Are there any questions from board members on this matter? Then is there a motion to agree to the extension of time?
So moved.
Second.
Steve second.
Steve seconds. Okay, that roll call vote.
Roll call on that motion, Lu Bachi?
Yes.
H Theodore Cohen?
Yes.
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Flynn?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Tom Sinavich?
Yes.
And Catherine Preston Connolly?
Yes.
All members voting in favor.
All right, thank you. Then our next item is a request for an extension of time for the hearing and decision on planning board case PB 361, a special permit application for development at 727 Massachusetts Avenue. And again, we'll have staff give us the status update on this one.
So this case was heard by the board on April 27th, the latest, and the board asked to consider additional changes, which will be reviewed on June 15. This requires an extension of the statutory timeframe and the request is to extend till July 30th of this year.
Great. Any questions about that? Nope. Okay, then is there a motion to agree to this extension of time?
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call vote.
Roll call on that motion, Lu Bachi?
Yes.
H Theodore Cohen?
Yes.
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Flynn?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Tom Sinavich?
Yes.
And Catherine Preston Connolly?
Yes.
That's all members voting in favor.
All right. Thank you. Moving right along then, we have a request for an extension of time for the hearing on planning board case PB 6, excuse me, PB 368, a special permit application for mixed-use development on the Volpe Exchange parcel. We'll have staff again provide us the status update.
Swati Joseph again on behalf of CDD. So this project is a PUD special permit application that had its first hearing on April 6th of this year, when the board made a positive preliminary determination, which enables the submission of a final development plan for a second public hearing. There are timing requirements for the second hearing in the zoning for PUD development, but given the scale of this proposal, that timeframe is difficult to meet. So the request is to extend that timeframe to July 30th of 2021. At this point, we anticipate the next hearing will be in July.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Nope. Then is there a motion to agree to this extension of time?
So moved.
Steve moves and Louis seconds. All right, roll call vote.
Roll call on that motion, Lu Bachi?
Yes.
H Theodore Cohen?
Yes.
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Flynn?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Tom Sinavich?
Yes.
And Catherine Preston Connolly?
Yes.
That's all members voting in favor.
Thank you. All right. And then we have, have one more request for an extension of time for the hearing and decision on planning board case PB 369, a special permit application for development at 600 Massachusetts Avenue. And once again, we'll have the status update from Swathi.
Thank you, Chair. The board first heard this hearing, this project in December of last year, 2020. And since then, the applicant has been working with staff to revise the proposal and address comments. They have submitted a revised submission and are seeking an extension for scheduling purposes. This request is to extend till August 31st of this year.
Any questions on that one?
Not a question, just a reminder that I'm recused from this case, so I won't vote on it.
All right. Thank you, Ted. Appreciate the reminder. If there are no other questions, is there a motion to agree to this extension of time?
So moved.
Seconded.
Steve moves, Gary seconds. Roll call vote.
Roll call on that motion, Lu Bachi?
Yes.
H Theodore Cohen?
I'm not voting. Recused on this.
Steve Cohen?
Yes.
Mary Flynn?
Yes.
Hugh Russell?
Yes.
Tom Sinavich?
Yes.
And Catherine Preston Connolly?
Yes.
That's six members voting in favor and one recused.
Thank you very much. All right. Now we get to move on to the review of Board of Zoning Appeal Cases. So we had a request to discuss BZA 117337, which seeks variances for, and special permits to construct a three-family dwelling at 145 Willow Street. Representatives from the applicant are present if there are questions, but let's start with what questions the board might have.
Who raised the issue?
Hugh. Hugh, who has his hand up and I'm not, didn't even see it there. Hugh, why, why don't you kick off our discussion here?
Sure. The proposed floor area, you know, they proposed is much greater than permitted. The setbacks are much less than are permitted. So I'm wondering, what is the, is there a rationale behind this? Or is it just somebody wants to build something much bigger than they're supposed to?
And I, I take it, Hugh, that, that's a request for information from the applicant, not staff?
That is correct. I think for given the magnitude of this, we should advise the zoning board if, if there's a planning issue.
Okay. All right. So I'm not sure who is here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Am I unmuted? This is Andrew Clum. I'm the applicant.
You are, okay. You are unmuted. So thank you very much for speaking up.
Great. Can I address the board now? Okay. So yeah, thank you for the question. So, you know, first of all, I, I want to just take a minute to just describe my company and what we're trying to do. I'm an architect and I'm also a builder and we are starting to be developers. And so we're architects first and we are trying to leverage our expertise with design in order to be able to develop projects that are doing the, the most that design can do for the doing the most that design can do for the communities that they're within. And so we found this property as an opportunity to add housing to Cambridge. And, you know, so what's there now is a single unit on a very small lot, as many of these slots are in the area. And our goal is to, is to build three units that are attractive to families and people who would want to be longtime residents in the neighborhood. And so that's to your question Hugh about the size. We are proposing, and I don't know if there's drawings that are available to be shown or not as a part of this discussion, but anyway, they're, they're, they're two bedrooms, two bathrooms with a small office. And our feeling is that to provide, so the area, even though there's a single family house on the, on the property at present, it's zoned for multifamily. And so we felt like this is a good opportunity to build much-needed housing in, in the area and that to do so with, with a lesser footprint would require a, something like, you know, a one-bedroom or a studio or something that would be more amenable to sort of more transient sort of population. And so anyway, that was the rationale for it. I mean, the existing house, sorry, are there, are we able to look at the drawings that we submitted as a part of this or is that not?
Swati, do we have those available?
Sure, we, we, you can actually share screen, Andrew.
Okay, I'm unfortunately not prepared to do that. I thought I was advised that I couldn't do that. Maybe that's for the zoning meeting on Thursday that that's the case.
If you give me a minute, I'll bring that up.
I just wanted to show the zoning summary sheet, which shows the footprint of the existing house and the proposed footprint. Basically, the existing house is on, is on two of the lot lines. One is on the north side and one is on the street side. And the, the proposed building pulls back from the street property line but remains, okay, perfect. If you can go, it would be more towards the front, the earlier pages, I think, in this, just to see the zoning.
This is the first one.
That's the first drawing that's in there?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe it's at the end then.
Is this the site plan?
That's the survey. If you keep going, there should be the zoning. These are existing photos. This is the parking study, okay, here, this one. Thank you. So I wanted to just show that the, so the sort of solid light gray hatch is the footprint of the existing house. The bold outline here, that's a rectangular footprint, is the proposed. And so I think, you know, yes, the overall area that's being requested is, is more than what's strictly allowable in the zoning ordinance. However, you know, we believe that a great deal of other properties adjacent to here also have, they exceed the FAR that's allowable and particularly the amount of area per unit is not being met. And it's largely due to the fact that the, that the lots are essentially non-conforming. They're, I think this is, ours is 35 feet wide, whereas the minimum is 50 and it's under, it's like 2,700 square feet of a lot as opposed to the 5,000 that's required. So if we go to the, one of the floor plans, I can show you the rationale, the layout. Great, so what you're seeing on the right-hand side is the first floor unit and the plans are essentially identical on the three. And the, on the street side, if you, I don't know if it's, if you can scroll up just a little bit to grab the sidewalk on the same drawing, yeah. So instead of having the mass of the house sit right on the, on the property line on the sidewalk edge, this is currently the case. We're proposing to shift it back by feet in order to allow for accessible access. And then this first floor unit would be accessible, able to be converted to accessible use. And probably the major design element in all three cases is that there's a embedded porch in the sort of middle of the plan. And what this allows us to do is to give each of these units sort of ample outdoor space that's private to them and also which brings, this is the south side of the building, so this sort of acts as a kind of light well that brings light into the, the middle of these, of these apartments. So, you know, part of the, part of the reason why I think the footprint is perhaps larger than you might otherwise expect from, is that there's a kind of an amenity here that's, that's expanding the, the plan a bit. If you didn't have that porch, which is not required, of course, you, you know, you could have a more compact plan, but I think it's to the detriment of, you know, again, supporting the idea of creating well-built space that's not only well-crafted but well-laid out in a way that's got, that just really works, has good bones and lasts a long time. That's the kind of thing that people want to, want to move into and stick around. And that's the goal. That was kind of a long-winded answer, but I hope, I hope I addressed your question.
Hugh?
So as I'm, what I'm hearing is that having a three-family house in this district is not an unusual thing. What's, the case here is the lot is very small.
Right.
And so the question we have to think about is, do we feel that providing family housing in a form that is not, that fits into the neighborhood is more desirable than meeting the minimum lot size and the, the other zoning things that fall from that? I, I think it's an interesting argument that he makes and I, so I'm not, I don't, I don't see how you can establish a hardship, but that's a different, that's the zoning issue, the board issue. Ted? Help me out on this.
With Catherine, it's making.
Yeah, no, go ahead Ted.
Well, this brings us back to the sort of whole missing middle discussion, which is, you know, where I think we came down on, you know, promoting housing was good, but were, you know, did there need to be some determination of what the limits of, what the deviations from the dimension should be? And, you know, I guess my hope was that this would go back to staff to be working on something that would come back to this board at some point for comment and discussion about. And this, you know, brings it right back today, you know, the, I mean, if, if there weren't a missing middle ordinance, then presumably anyone who wanted to do this type of project would have to seek a variance. And I think we all were cognizant that there probably isn't the rationale for granting it, but that would be one way of gaining more housing. So it's, you know, it, it opens up a much larger discussion.
Steve?
Well, I agree that it opens up a, a, a larger discussion and I, I think it's a discussion that would be more appropriate in any, in the context of considering a change in the zoning code. But that's not what's before us. This is a variance. I, I would simply defer to the ZBA on this matter. I, I wouldn't feel the need for us to render an opinion.
Okay. Mary?
Yeah, it is complicated, as, you know, by the points that Ted made about the missing middle. And, you know, while I generally would like to give guidance to, to the ZBA or I, I sort of feel like if we take a position on this particular project, then we may somehow box ourselves in on a decision regarding the zoning, you know, by setting some sort of a precedent. And maybe I'm sort of taking that too far, but I think I would just assume just leave it up to the other board.
Okay. Other thoughts? Anyone who feels strongly that we do need to forward a recommendation on this to the BCA? Okay. I am seeing no takers on that. I'm missing something? No? Okay, just making sure. So then, just to, because while we are still remote, we do like everything super official. Is there a motion to not make a recommendation to the BCA on this?
Yes, I would make that motion.
Steve moves.
Second.
Mary seconds. Roll call vote.
Roll call on that motion, Lu Bachi.
Not present.
H Theodore Cohen.
Yes.
Steve Cohen.
Yes.
Mary Flynn.
Yes.
Hugh Russell.
Yes.
Tom Sinovic.
Yes.
Catherine Preston Connolly.
Yes.
That's six members voting in favor.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to hand the reins over to, to Mary for one last BCA case discussion.
Okay, very good, all right. You'll be leaving us, sorry. Thank you Catherine. So we have one last case and that is BCA 118920, which is a proposed telecommunications antenna installation located at 40 Land Boulevard. And staff will give us an overview of why this is before us.
Thank you Vice Chair Flynn. I'm, I'm going to turn the mic over to Jeff Roberts to summarize this one.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I guess just, just briefly as a reminder that, you know, all telecommunications antennas at the request of the BCA are, are brought to the planning board for your review. I think that, you know, when they're reviewing these, that the aesthetic impacts are really the, the primary concern. And so that's why the BCA looks for guidance. And we in turn looked at guidance from our urban design team and I think if, I can't see if Susanna Biglin is still present, but she is the one who's been kind of boldly leading the charge on, on these antenna reviews. So I, I'll see if, if she or anyone else from the team has any comments on this particular case or any guidance to offer to the board.
Okay.
Hi, this is Susanna.
There she is, thank you Susanna.
We actually didn't have any comments on this one. It doesn't look like much is changing in the photo simulations. The two new replacement antennas will face Land Boulevard, but they're screened by wall screens on the existing penthouse. And nothing will be changed that faces the Charles River, so there's no sort of visual impact. So we didn't have any additional comments or design suggestions on this one.
Why is it before us if there are no changes?
I believe the BCA has requested that the planning board review all of the antenna case.
I think probably because we were reviewing a lot of them to begin with and, and they probably, because they are more sort of a design issue in general, that, you know, it's probably, it's really more just a standard review is my understanding at this point.
Except usually there's a change of some nature.
Right, 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 right.
There is a change here. There's a change of equipment that triggers the BCA review. But it's not, from our point of view, it's not a substantial change. So we could probably say to the board appeal that this change is not substantial and,
So moved.
Okay, so I guess there are no other questions, but just in case, does anyone have questions? No, let me see. No, okay, well then, we have a motion, right? Tom, was there a second?
A second.
Okay, Steve? Daniel, can we have a roll call?
What's, what?
There's no comment from us, so do you need a roll call? I mean, we had a roll call on the other one where we had no comments, so.
My, my hunch is yes, we should still take a vote, but I'll, I'll defer to Jeff if, if we don't need to take an action.
Okay.
I think we should comment saying that we have no objection to it.
Oh, I see.
That's what, that's what I wrote down as the motion, that there, that the change that's being proposed is not substantial. And to communicate that to the BCA, if that's, if that wasn't the intended, that, that's what I heard is the motion.
That was the intent of my motion. I'm sorry, I jumped the gun on that.
All right, that's all right. That's all right. Okay, so are we clear then on the motion? Jeff? Yes, okay. And can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, on that motion, Lu Bachi.
Yes.
H Theodore Cohen.
Yes.
Steve Cohen.
Yes.
Mary Flynn.
Yes.
Hugh Russell.
Yes.
And Tom Sinovic.
Yes.
And Catherine Preston Connolly is recused, so that is all members voting in favor.
Thank you, Daniel, much appreciated. Okay, so that includes the business on our agenda. Are there any additional comments from staff?